I guess we'll call the meeting to order, please. Please stand for the pledge you believe in.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all members are present this evening. We don't have a student rep, so we have three principals tonight. Who would like to go first?
Okay. We're busy putting final touches on class lists and teacher's schedules, getting our letters written for welcoming back the new staff, planning the agenda for their three in-service days, and working in and out of the office amongst the mess. But hopefully within another week, we should be good to go.
We are also getting ready to go for the year. Fall sports started today, so we've had a number of students in the building. Speaking of fall sports, we will be on a televised football game this year. I don't know if you heard that yet, but on the My 9 Network, they air Friday night football games. We have a 4:00 PM game at Duluth Marshall because they don't have lights, so it's an early game, but it will be on My 9 on September 12th at 4:00. The high school is hosting the co-op's special ed conference for new and returning special ed teachers next Wednesday, so we will be full to the gills with special ed teachers next week. And we gave out copies of the handbooks. Do you want me to go over what the changes are right now or later?
We'll get to that.
Okay. Then I'm done.
Same with us. We're getting ready for the new year. The letters are ready to go out. Our schedules are pretty much finalized with a few changes, I'm sure, coming at the end. Open house is scheduled for Thursday, August 28th from 3:30 to 5:30, and we're still getting a few people in place. We're still looking for a science teacher.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, moving on. Is there input? Anyone who's not on the agenda who wishes to address the board? 6.0, agenda changes and deletions?
I have a few. They're in front of you. 9.082, that wasn't the electronic version, but we thought this was ripped up, so Kathy did the best she could. She did forget the minutes of special meeting. So those are there for you. Also, the consent agenda, we are adding Mark Mewich as a volunteer junior high football coach. For new business, under 10.11, if 10.10 is approved, Michelle Schreiber going from ECFE to fifth grade, she is requesting a yearly leave of absence from her early childhood position in the district. 10.12, we are recommending that George Harrington come back for a .73 automotive careers position. He has been in that for the past couple of years. And then 10.13, we have a couple policies that needed to be changed there on the agenda tonight, and if they get passed, 10.13 will become the approval of the student handbooks, so that we can send those on.
Thank you. So let me get this straight. 10.10 is approved Shelley Schreiber for elementary teaching position?
Yep.
10.11 was...
10.10 is on the agenda already.
Okay, 10.11 though?
10.11, and she's requesting a leave of absence from her current position in the district.
Oh, okay. Okay. 7.0, approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 8.0, approve the consent agenda? Is anything on the consent agenda you want pulled off? Excuse me. Forgot to turn mine off. At least it's fancy.
That is quite a ringtone you got there.
Well, at least they can hear it though.
Yeah, we all could.
I'm glad you said that.
Everybody at home did too.
My kids would never allow that.
I never get a call. Now, okay, the consent agenda, is there anybody who has anything on there who wants to pull it up to discuss it? Okay, I'll... I need an approval for the consent agenda. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.0, personnel. 10.1, accept the resignation of Lori Urjovic, her professional.
Lori accepted a elementary teaching job in North Dakota.
No?
Oh, Laura Meyer. Started with an L. She's the one going there. Yes, so she's leaving the district. Sorry. No. So anyway, that kind of got tripped up there. Keith, your ringtone got me off.
I know. Trying to shut it off too.
Anyway, I'm recommending that we approve her resignation.
I'll move. We accept the resignation of Lori Urjovic?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favors? I'm sorry.
Well, there's one thing. She also states in here that she would be available for most of December and February. Will that work in with you, Jeff, at all, or is that...
This is something.
Okay.
She's leaving her position that she has now.
Anything else? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.2, approve the full-time temporary custodial driver appointment of Dave... Is it Selly or Sealy?
Sealy.
Sealy?
We interviewed four individuals for this position. This is a... It's full-time temporary as a result of Tom Ward's leave of absence, so it'll be temporary for one year. We interviewed four candidates. Very quality pool we had this time. Dave has been filling in for us, and we felt that this time that he'd be a good fit for us. He's taking his driver's license tomorrow, is that correct?
21st.
21st. I'm old for two today. I'm recommending that we point him to the full-time temporary custodian driver at 85% for his 98 probation period.
We need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Support. That's good. There's a lot of interest. That's a good thing.
Okay, we have a motion and several seconds. So, any other discussion?
If he was not to get the license, then of course we'd have to look elsewhere then, or...
How we've done it in the past is we've given our new employees opportunity to acquire their license once they have gotten the job. This is a little bit different because Dave has already started down that path to acquiring his license while he's filling in casual for us.
You're talking bus endorsement?
Bus endorsement, yes.
But he's asking if he didn't pass then...
If he doesn't pass it, can we give him a second chance, or do we start looking...
That's how we've always done it, is we would give him that chance, but that's, I guess...
That's up to us then?
Okay. Just wanted to...
The last three or four employees have taken three or four cracks at passing the pre-trip inspection part of the portion of the bus driving test. Dave has already passed that. He just needs to pass the driving portion. So he's a little further along than he could be.
He's over the hump.
Yeah.
The first one is always usually the hardest.
So he's passed the pre-trip, and the reality is if we schedule tomorrow, at least the next date we could get would be sometime toward the end of September or the first part of October for an additional test if it's necessary.
Okay. Any other discussion? We need a second? Is he already have?
We have several.
Several of them.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You can tell it's Monday. 10.3, approve Sue Malovich for part-time Title I teacher.
I'll move.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.4, approve Sue Chaffey for part-time Title I teacher.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.5, approve Jane Chilcock for part-time Title I teacher.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.6, approve Kaylee Henon for part-time Title I teacher.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.7, approve Mary Wilds for part-time Title I teacher.
I'll move.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.8, approve the .45 FTE special ed and the .55 FTE social studies appointment of Adam Wilson.
I'll so move.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.9, approve the additional Title I hours for Bianne Pellin.
We, with the retirement of Bob Sitzman, we chose to not fill that fully, so we... Last year, we had two halftime people where Bianne will do both of those jobs. Is that correct? So we're only adding six additional hours there, so it's actually a reduction in the time that we're spending on that position.
Okay. We need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.10, approve the 1.0 FTE elementary teaching position for Shelley Schreiber.
This will be fifth grade in the Nell Sheen.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.11, I think we should have done this the other way here.
No, you're right.
Okay. She is asking for a leave of absence for her ECFE position. Just Shelley Schreiber.
I'll move.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I ask what the point is? Does she not think she's going to be the fifth grade teacher next year, or...
Gives her some protection during her probation, because she'll be probationary for a year in that fifth grade position, so if it doesn't work out, she could go back to early childhood. Whereas if she did not have that, she could not go back to early childhood.
So this would be the same thing that we would have to do with maintenance position and fill out temporary persons...
A little bit different in the... She's not leaving the district, so... But yes, the...
What are we going to do with coordinator position for the school readiness?
Mrs. Bull is going to take that.
Anyone else? Okay, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.12, George Harrington, contract for .73 transportation careers.
I'll move. Support.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 10.13, policy...
That's actually going to be my third mistake of the night. It actually will be 11.6. It'll be under new business, the policy, the handbooks.
Okay. Okay. New business, 11.1, approve the second reading of the following policies, 514 and 613. 514 is the bullying prevention policy, and 613 is the graduation requirements policy. It's your pleasure. We need a motion... Now, this is the second reading, so we have to make... We need a motion and a second to okay these also.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.2, consider proposals for changes to the Gilbert maintenance positions.
This, when we talk about at the committee of the whole, moving a... to a daytime custodial position at the Gilbert School, whereas right now, there isn't one. There's someone from 11 to 7. So we would be moving that shift forward to a daytime shift. And as a result of that, that would include adding two hours to the Edworth Campus custodial staff because one of the Gilbert afternoon currently comes and does the pool area. We, I know that at the committee of the whole, we had talked about possibly making our current halftime position here at the Edworth Campus full-time, after having discussed with the person that is currently in that halftime position. He wasn't real interested in having a full-time position. He'd be more happy to have the two hours that we were looking for, and the union was okay with that. So I'm recommending that we approve that.
We need a motion and a second to that effect.
I'll move.
One second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Further discussion?
So it's...
That position, the two hours.
It says the pool area. Is that like the CPO, or just like clean around the pool and the locker rooms and that kind of thing?
That person would be cleaning the locker rooms and the pool area. Right?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.3, approve the non-negotiated rates of pay.
We had this on the agenda last time, and table it due to the discrepancy between elementary and secondary hourly rate of subpay. I did look into it, and was explained the reason why it was that, and didn't make one. Wasn't significant enough to upset Beth again, so... I even... You don't know, and go ahead.
Elementary teachers, you...
Yes, I know. I was very pleased to see that. Thank you.
What'd you say, four years?
Four years I've been working on it.
So we need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
All support.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, I have one item I'd like to discuss regarding this.
Okay.
It's not on the list, but we recently hired a young man to work as a technology assistant, I believe was what we called him, for the summer, and we paid him $10 an hour. The position was already filled before the board got the name and the hourly. We pay $8.50 an hour for a playground or library aide who deals with our kids, and we pay a technology person $10 an hour, and I find that personally ridiculous. So in the future, it's too late to go back and change it now, but in the future, I don't think we should pay any kind of helper position more than what we would pay someone who's caring for our kids. I think we need to cap that at whatever the minimum is on this list, in this case, $8.50 an hour.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 11.4, consider proposal to change the school readiness program.
Included a proposal. We had talked about this at the committee of the whole meeting as well, moving to a four-day program for our four and five-year-olds. At that meeting, we had talked about calling the existing parents that were signed up. I had Mrs. Bull do that. We came up with...
For the most part, I believe we heard from all but three of the messages. They were all in favor. A few of them said, well, I know my child could use three days. They might be tired for four, but we'll try it. We even called those that were in the half-day program, and they would be interested in being part of that if they could have the four days and make it half-days. So overall, I felt in regards to parents, they were very supportive of the four-day program.
We also talked with staff, and don't feel it would be a problem for us to offer a half-day program within that program. They could come to the morning session if parents are willing to come get them at noon.
Just so that's clear, that if they opt for the half-day, it's... They don't get to choose morning or afternoon. It's morning. It's the half-day.
It would be morning only.
Yes.
Is this going to be structured as a four-day program, or is it going to be, you can choose two days, or it's either all or nothing?
It will be structured as a four-day program.
So there's no option for two full days?
I'm going to say there may be a parent who is feeling that four days is a lot for their child, you know, depending on the age, and they may want to do two or three in the beginning. I think they will see, if they feel that that child is able to do the four full days, that they will do the four full days. But we will make it work in regards to a mom or a dad that would only want them in there for two days, if that's the case.
Because I've talked to like three people that were concerned about daycare.
And you know, that has been probably my biggest, you know...
Private daycares, they got to pay for the whole day.
Correct. Or they have to lock in a spot with a, you know...
Yeah, it's money, right?
And just for your information, the reason we're moving now, and it seems like it's unsettled, in the spring, when the conversations were happening at the legislature as to adding funds to four and five-year-old programs, there was no money sent or available to districts till July, really. That's why now the programming is coming out where they want you to do the grant for additional funds and to put in these programs. They're being supportive. So we do seem unsettled, but it would not have been our plan to be this unsettled at this time in the year, you know? But yes, that is the concern of some, the fact that they either have to lock into a daycare, or the daycare that they were in two or three days a week now doesn't really have a spot for a one-day-a-week for that child.
Unless they pay for that whole...
That, correct. That is correct.
And that's the biggest concern that I've heard, is that two days was negotiable for daycares, you know, because it's two days, but then when you start doing four days, it's... Because a lot of people are private daycares, so they...
Yes.
They don't have the drop-off...
Yes.
Policies as public daycares do, and so there's a little bit of family concern with cost on the one-day-a-week. That was my part that I've heard. And then communication. Everybody's waiting to make plans for the school year here too.
Anyone else?
I'm guessing the four days will be Monday through Thursday?
Correct.
Have we worked out the difference between those that want to use the bus and when the program's going to start?
Actually, I didn't feel that we could move on any of that until you made a decision tonight.
Okay.
And we will do, like the bus buddies, like we talked about, have an older...
Fifth and sixth graders as bus buddies. Correct.
We're in the very bottom there. Okay, we need a motion and a second.
I'll move.
Accept? Okay.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.5, close session to discuss asking negotiation strategies.
I'll move. Do we go to close session to discuss asking negotiation strategies?
Did you want to do 11.6 first, before we did that?
No. We'll just sit some person.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into close session after 11.6. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go into close session after, and then we... When we're done, we'll come back out and adjourn the meeting afterwards. Just so everyone knows. Okay, moving on, 11.6, policy changes.
I will go first, because I think I have the most.
Student handbook, yep.
The student handbooks had to be adjusted to reflect the policy changes for the graduation and academic progress policy that you just approved, and the new bullying legislation. We added this on today because we really need to get these copies ready for students. So in the senior high handbook, the biggest changes are, on page nine, we have always allowed students to buy their own locks for the senior high lockers, which provides a variety of issues over the course of the year, from students moving them around, to losing them, to not keeping them locked. We are handing all of our students an iPad this year, and we will be requiring them to lock their lockers. And the best way to do that is to provide them with a lock. So they will check out a lock from us, keep it till graduation. If they lose the combination, we have it on file. Should we need to get into that locker for any reason, these locks all have a key entry on the back, so they're a combination lock, but we have keys similar to the locks in Gilbert. They also are gold plate-based with an Edworth Gilbert bear carved on them, so notice them once the school year starts and you're walking around. So we did buy locks for them. They're getting them. We will be, I don't know if concerns have been brought up here before, I kind of think they had been, but we will be very, making it very public that any underclass students, sophomores, freshmen, and juniors who leave for an after-school event, we want them to bring their cars into the student parking lot before they go. We don't want our kids walking out to their cars in the dark. So we've changed that policy a little bit, that you just need to come into the office and get a temporary parking pass and get your car in here. So we've made that... It's always been the case that we've allowed them to do that, but seniors get pretty fired up when they don't see a parking pass and a car in the lot, so we're giving them temporary parking passes. The graduation policy has changed. It now reflects the policy you just approved. That's on page 13, so you'll see that there. We deliberately left fairly vague the policy language about meeting the state standards for assessment. It used to list the assessments you have to pass, but they change almost every year now, so we've just said you have to meet all of Minnesota's state standards for assessment. Academic progress procedure also reflects the policy. We will be holding students to credits to advance, so they had to earn five credits to advance to juniors, or sophomore status, 11 for junior status, 17 for senior, and 24 to graduate. In the past, we've let them move on and let them call themselves the next grade and catch up along the way. The post-secondary enrollment options now reflects the new state. That's on page 16. The state, this is cut and pasted right off the state website. There's some new language about allowing 10th graders and possibly 9th graders to enroll in some post-secondary options, so that language had to be changed in here. And then you will find excerpts from the new bullying policy on the last three pages of this handbook. Putting the full policy in there was a little excessive. We wanted the parts in here that we really want parents to be aware of and be trained on, from reporting to what we call bullying and what the school will do about it. So that's what you find in here?
Major changes in the Nell Sheen and the junior high policies, basically, or student handbooks, basically are the staffing, page six on both the Nell Sheen and the junior high, changes in staff that we have, and also the bullying policies on page 19, I think, in the Nell Sheen, and page 14 in the... Major changes in the Nell Sheen and the junior high policies, basically, or student handbooks, basically are the staffing, page six on both the Nell Sheen and the junior high, changes in staff that we have, and also the bullying policies on page nineteen, I think, in the Nell Sheen, and page fourteen in the junior high. There is no other major changes.
At the Franklin, again, minimal for us, the directory on page seven has the changes in staffing for grade levels. On page nine, the lunch schedule is slightly different than it has been in the past for those times. Page ten, the note about school lunches, where if you qualify for free or reduced, you will receive a free lunch. And that new bullying policy, again, added to the back of this handbook, I believe it begins on page thirty-two.
Thank you.
Just a question on bullying, bullying policy, do all the handbooks have the same portion?
Yes.
So they all are identical?
They're identical.
Okay, which pleasure, exception? Need a motion to accept?
Almost.
No second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
I had a few things, wanted to just update you on where we're at with construction projects. We're getting rooms carpeted here. This office was torn up all last week, we just scrambled to get put back together today, but that seems to be going well. I mean, it's, we're on time.
Sooner than it's gone in, in your idea, I think, here.
They started, the company, you know, last meeting, we had approved the re-rough for the gym. They, they came with their huge vacuum on Sunday last week and sucked all the ballast off, and it rained last night, and we got water in there again, but they are, they will be. They will be working on that, and that shouldn't be a problem, it shouldn't disrupt students at all, or classes. The two problem areas that we have, those over in Gilbert, I had previously reported that things were going well with the canopy entrance. And the canopy entrance and the concrete working at, will, seems to be fine. The part that's not fine is the door was not ordered in a timely fashion, therefore will not be here until September fifteenth. So there will be a little bit of a mess at the start of the school year for that. On a more concerning note, the windows at the Franklin, they are experiencing, the glass company is experiencing a labor shortage right now. They're, for the past, I'd say at least week and a half, they've been down to two people working on that project, and it is not going along very well. We had a construction meeting last week, Mark asked the question, what would it cost us to finish what they're doing and, and resume again next summer? Because they are currently looking, projecting into November right now to finish with the whole project. So they were, our architect is looking into, basically what we're looking at is they can order the materials, we can store them in, in the, in the arts building next door there. The glass company didn't have a problem with that, the problem that all of them had was the, there's gonna be a three percent increase in labor costs from here to there. So our architect was looking at how much that would potentially cost us, and we'll, I'll get back to you on that as soon as, as soon as I have those numbers, but. We're, we're seriously looking into possibly delaying the rest of that, finishing what they have ripped out now, and delaying that till next summer to avoid three months of disruption.
So because of their labor shortage, it's gonna cost us three percent more.
What's our, what's our penalty on this, that, there's gotta be a contract, but there's gotta be a penalty involved, and then.
Yeah, we could, we can, we can assess them five percent penalty.
So we'll have a, a net gain of two percent on our side if they're gonna charge us three percent for next year?
It, right now for us, it's about, do we want school disrupted for that long? I mean, I, I, we can hold them to the fire on, on the date and charge them for that five percent.
I'm just saying, if.
But if we, if we choose to have them go into next summer, then that five percent is on the table for us.
But that should be part of our negotiating to pick up without any cost to us, because it's their delay, right?
It's something, it's something that we will definitely be working on, I'm just, I'm looking for a number right now.
I'm saying, I, I agree, I don't think it should cost us anything more for their problems. Even if we do.
Things like that happen, and that's a specialty thing too. There's not a whole lot of people out there to put windows in like this, at this level.
So I will keep you updated on how that is going, but as of right now today, there's still planning that's going to happen, we haven't told them.
Well, keep us on the loop.
Little bit of my stuff, I, I had my exit interview today for the, for my license, I did pass. I do have to go to class on Wednesday, and then it'll be just a matter of waiting for the state to process my license. That is going on.
Congratulations.
Then the last thing I wanna bring up, we had talked about at our committee of the whole meeting, the fact that Mrs. Bull is retiring. We had some folks express interest in replacing her with a principal, I had some other people contact me later, unsure of that, so I just at least wanted to have a discussion tonight, so that we can start moving forward on that. As far as what the boards, what they wanna do with that.
Why wasn't it the committee of the whole meeting? What are, are there other options besides the principal?
My initial recommendation was for the remainder of this year to, to put a dean of students in that position for the remainder of this year, and then evaluate our needs at the end of the year. And basically, my concern was at that point is finding a person at that time of year that can get out of their contract, and typically, they're probably working somewhere.
Are you also thinking of the possibility of having the dean of students continue beyond the end of the school year, if things work out?
If things worked out, but I mean, like I said, we would, we would evaluate that in the spring and make a decision at that time. I guess I'm just looking for, looking forward to the end of this year, at this point.
If you hired a dean of students, it would be just a straight up temporary position till the end of the school year, and then.
Even if we, I think even if we hired a principal, it would, it would be an intern for the rest of the year.
I was resting board, when we.
What's the difference between a dean of students and a principal, as far as responsibility?
The different, a dean of students can't have, they can't say disciplined staff, licensed staff, I mean, that would, you would have to assign one of our existing principals or myself to that building if there were staff issues. But all the discipline parental stuff, even staff meetings and stuff like that, I mean, they can, they can do that. They just, if there were issues with a particular staff, they could not do that, they could have.
So that's really the only main difference?
Right.
Is staff issues, discipline. But you, you or one of the other principals would then cover that situation.
Right.
Final, I, I for one would be in favor of the dean of students for the balance of the year, I think it, it gives us the most options. I think it's a very workable situation, especially for half a year, it gives us a good chance to see if it's a viable option.
I would like to rather go out and see if anyone would want the principalship, and if not, then look at it to the end of the school year, dean of students.
If that's the case, can't we post for a principal, an interim principal?
Principal or dean of students, and then see what comes in, and then you're really not tied to one or the other, and kicking the can down the road until one don't work out, you just kinda open it up and see what comes in.
There's, there's a cost difference, somebody may be more inclined to apply for a principal position, rather than a dean of students position.
Well, exactly, but Houston, in the event that there is no pool of principals that wanna come in midterm, and then you turn around and you gotta. Go through the whole process again, I mean, can't you just post for either or, and if you get a good principal that matches, throw the, throw the number out there? I mean, obviously, there's gotta be a qualifications difference between a dean of students and a principal, right?
You're licensed, right?
Right.
Anyone else?
I think we should stay with the principal. We've had this discussion, so.
I agree.
I think we should too, but I wouldn't rule it out if they can't find anybody.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, if nobody wants the position in mid, midterm, they'll, then they say, well, I'm fine for July, then we can look at dean of students.
But I don't wanna put Jeff in a position where we can't find anybody, and then all of a sudden, we told you so.
But here we are in December, and then there's nobody.
We want something that you're gonna be comfortable with also.
If nobody applies by October thirty first, or October fifteenth, or whatever, then we look for dean of students. So, you know.
Do you have a recommendation, Jeff, which way you would like to go?
Like I said, I said in the, in our meeting, I mean, my job would be a lot easier if I had a principal, obviously, cause I mean, there's, there'd be less for me to do, but. I do, I do have a concern as to, if we're gonna find, I mean, I'm fine with posting for a principal, if that's what they wanna do, and if you guys, if we don't find a qualified person, if we could move in a different direction, I'd be fine with that.
But I would also think that we have people both in-house and in neighboring districts who are currently in a classroom, who would have their principal's license, perhaps acquired it recently and weren't in a position to take openings that were posted last spring, it's hard to say, we may actually have a pretty good pool. So I'd like to at least make the effort to get a principal in there. But I certainly agree that I don't want that to hold everything up either, I, if we're unable to find a candidate, you know, satisfy the candidate that we.
That's why I'm saying.
We can, yeah, we revert to dean of students, but certainly with the intent, I would hope, in the short term, that's just a stop, stopgap measure.
Right.
Then I'd ask for permission to post for a principal.
I'll make the motion to post for a principal.
I'll support.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Are we gonna set a deadline before we get too carried away of when we want the.
Time.
I mean, I don't wanna end up here on December thirty first and say, hey, we don't have nobody tomorrow.
Oh, we won't go that long.
But there's always a deadline on the application anyway.
We typically, for an administrative position, you're gonna put a month for taking applications.
Right away in, then.
Shortly thereafter, we'll do interviews and see what comes.
So it'll be the middle of, middle of September.
Yeah, well, we know by the end of September, at the latest, following interviews and stuff.
Mike, I would have a team that would interview first, and then I would bring whoever to interview with you guys, cause you guys have to hire that position, if I can't.
I guess as Bull said, there may be somebody in Hall's here that might be able to accept this position, or?
Well, if they apply, yeah.
Or else neighboring, you know, schools, St. Louis County, Virginia, you know. Anyone else, you know, Duluth.
So we're just putting out for applications?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah? Any other discussion? Okay, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Work member topics. Mike, I'll start with you.
Um, one thing I wanted to say this week, I, I talked to another person this weekend that has interviewed with the district in the past, and this person is one of, a couple that I've talked, gotten involved this summer, and I guess I'll, I guess I won't get into detail details, but. I would just hope as a district, as, as speaking of employment, that when we choose not to hire somebody, that we are maybe formally or officially telling them they didn't get the position, whether it be a Dear John letter, or a courtesy call or something. I've heard many people say that they've interviewed for the district and they've never heard that they didn't get something back, they've called three months later and they said, oh, you didn't get it, thanks, you know, and I just thought, it's kind of a.
I don't know if we've ever done that.
Well, I, I don't, like I said, this is all just somebody telling me, and then I've heard it previously that they.
Well, not to my, not to my knowledge, we haven't, we haven't done that.
I've always gotten a letter.
And that's, and that's just, I, it's just somebody talking, so I just figured I'd throw it out there and just ask that, I hope we do do that, and.
The, the last one, uh, when we did maintenance interviews, and we did that about a month ago, we just hired the guy tonight that we interviewed for, and the reason that that ended up happening, and I'll take responsibility for that.
Well, I'm not saying it's this position, I'm just.
But I'm just saying, in this instance, we went through lots of moving here, moving there, and now we just, and I didn't know who was not going to get it at that point. We had some quality candidates, my intent was tomorrow, after this hire was made, that those letters would go out, and it was a long time.
This wasn't a maintenance position, this was a teacher position.
Well, then I don't know about that.
I'm just, well, like I said, I, what's in the past is in the past, but I was saying, moving forward, I would hope we do our due diligence to kind of make sure we get that information to them, and I mean, the other thing I would say is, I've heard from a couple of other people that were teachers in other districts, and asked if they would ever consider applying for Evlith Gilbert, and I get a lot of no's, they don't wanna have nothing to do with our district, and I didn't get specifics, but.
But if they're from Virginia, it'd be a pay cut.
Yeah, well, it wasn't, but I'm just saying that there's a lot of people that wouldn't even apply to Evlith Gilbert, or half a dozen that maybe I've talked to in the last summer, and I just, I don't know if it's part of this follow-up exit interviewing process that some people might talk about, or just alley gossip talk that maybe is not true, but I just hope that we try to do as much as we can to make it a place that people wanna work, and whether if they don't get the job this time, they could be an asset in the future for whatever reason, that we don't ever burn bridges. That was all my point, I just, not pointing no fingers, just kinda relaying what I've heard and go from there.
Thank you. Beth? Tom?
Do we just have a short room in before we go into the full session?
Yeah.
Okay, that's my.
Couple of things. We got a letter from the superintendent, just outlining a few things with the start of the school year, it's the first time we've been included in that, and I appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you, that was, it was nice to be in the same loop as everybody else. I did send this to the superintendent who was going to forward it to everybody, I don't know if everyone got it or not, I got a letter from John Marcaccini and Greg Lovato. That there's a piece of memorabilia here in the building that's currently housed in one of the maintenance rooms in the basement, and I was, I haven't seen it, but I understand it's a list of World War Two vets.
I'm not sure if it's World War One or World War Two, most likely World War Two.
Okay, and John and Greg are interested in obtaining that so that they can display it with other Evlith memorabilia. I know they've spoken to the superintendent, they talked to me, I think they've talked to a few other people. They're asking that we make some decision, if possible, about sharing that with them, they're not asking to keep it forever, they'd like to include it in their display, it would still be school property, but they'd have possession of it for display purposes, and they are in the process of working to get a building to use as a museum, and they'd like to include it there.
I think something like that needs to be out in the public.
I agree. What does the school district do with it?
Nothing, it's currently sitting in the basement in a.
We used to have a display down by the Franklin, remember we used to have in those glass cases in that hallway?
But a lot of that's changed over the years, though.
Yeah, I thought so.
And this was brought to their attention, so they've expressed an interest in it. And if you'd like, we can certainly table it and discuss it next time.
Is there a value of it, I mean, is it something that we need to think about?
I don't know if there's a dollar value on it or not, most of what they have is.
Market.
Can I have some clip?
Yeah.
I think it's mostly just inherent value, there's a value to it that's not replaceable, and in my conversations with Greg Lovato, I would be in favor of a permanent loan, so that we retain. that we retain possession of it in the event of...
Which is what I said.
So that it doesn't wind up in Greg's grandson's attic of his garage for three decades. It would come back to us, and there would be no estate battle over this piece of history, irreplaceable history.
And that's their intent, that if, they don't want it in the basement. They'd like it to be displayed. They want to show some pride in, with those names of folks who served and...
At this level, just collecting plus, right? Lots of that cash. It's in the woodshop in the basement.
At least if you do get it all, it'll be maintained, too.
Well, that was my only point about asking the value, is if, I mean, I got no problem with doing what you guys are suggesting, is just loaning it out forever, but in the event that maybe some, if it is irreplaceable, something did happen to it, in their possession, I mean, is, do we want to go that far with it, or do we just...
I don't, I don't know how we, well, I mean, I guess we could pay someone to, to evaluate it for us.
Or do we care? I mean, do we just want to enjoy it?
But I think the fact that we've kept it in the basement for years is, kind of indicates that we're not, up to this point, it has not been displayed in recent decades, so I, I don't know that it's a concern at this stage. I, I don't know.
If you're putting this on the table, I would suggest also discussing, there is one on the north stairwell going to the auditorium on the Gilbert campus that I believe is World War I. Veterans listed on there.
Both were.
Pardon me?
It's both were.
It's both, and that, too, could be loaned out to a historical society. So if, if there is someone interested in that one as well, is this a policy that we want to start and something? And I would encourage that, because they should be viewed.
The only difference between the two is the Gilbert one that's currently up.
Yeah, it's been, it's been displayed for years. Now, this one hasn't been, I don't know, bombing the motion that we allow.
You can't act on stuff, then, and really, this type item, I don't know that it needs one.
Don't need any more motions.
I would just give him permission to put it there.
Yeah, as long as they make the board aware, and we feel, agree with it, we don't need a motion.
The only thing I would ask is that maybe they can come to our next meeting and show it to us, so we know what we've given away.
Yeah.
You know, I haven't, I haven't even seen a picture of it, and I've been asked to go downstairs and look at it, so, you know, I don't know, but it'd be nice to see it. And I, I know they'd be willing to do that, and I think that would be a nice gesture at the very least. And just one other thing, we're getting back into sports season, and I do attend games, and every year, it's the same thing. We've got huge numbers of unattended young kids. We've got young elementary who've come to these games, and I've seen parents pull up, kids get out, go into the game, mom and dad leave the scene, and the adults that are left at the game, whether it's football, or hockey, or basketball, or whatever it is, are kind of left feeling a certain responsibility for making sure that these kids aren't hurt or aren't hurting someone else. At football, we've had episodes with these kids spitting at each other at long distances, and at patrons waiting down below to buy their tickets, and I don't know what we can do about it, but it's gotten out of control. And if it was, if, I mean, if we were talking older elementary, you know, they, they start to spread their wings a little bit, but some of these kids are preschool, and some are very young elementary, and they're there without adults.
So do you?
I don't know how we control that, but we've got, we're paying people to stand at the gates and take tickets. Can't we create some kind of a rule that if you're, if you're not this tall, you don't come into the ga, but you don't come in if you don't have a grown-up with you? It shouldn't be everybody else's problem. At hockey games, they're running around in the, in the tunnel area underneath, and at basketball, they're up and down those stairs, they're all over the building.
You have that problem with parents, that you bring their kids and sit there.
Well, I, I agree, but at least, at least there's a connection there. If a child gets hurt, or if something happens, you have half a chance of finding an adult, but...
You would think the school would have a non-accompanied children policy already, but...
And if it exists, I'm not aware of it, so correct me if I'm out of turn here, but...
That's kind of why I go in.
I, I don't know what action we can take to, to control that.
We do have a staff member that supervises games, so I just, we'll have a discussion with Mr. Thorson about that. That's about the best I can do right now.
And maybe we can remind parents that if they're going to bring very young children to any school event, I mean, we even had it at graduation. There were little ones running around. Now, the parents might have been there, but I never saw them together with the kids, you know, just remind them, if they're going to bring very young children to school events, that, you know, that's, that really does put the child in jeopardy. If somebody gets hurt, whether they're hurting someone or the child gets injured, the rest of us can't be responsible for babysitting.
Thank you. Mike, we got...
Yeah, I just got one thing to bring up. As everybody, everyone knows, I'm on the Gilbert Library Board, and last Monday was our board meeting. Well, our director brought it to my, to us, that she's now added a new thing in our website, in the Gilbert Public Library website, and a couple of things that she brought to my attention is that for the driver, Department of Motor Vehicle, the driver's test, for getting your permit, we now have it on our website where you can take practice tests. So whether you're a student or an adult, and you want to get your permit, you can go online on our website and take the test over. There's different tests. You can read, you know, take as many times as you want till you pass it, and then you can go to Hoover Road and take the test. The other thing is that for the students, is there's a thing called Khan Academy. I don't know if you've ever heard of it, but for the SAT preps, we do practice tests on that, too. And there's other things, too, that we, that she's now put on there, I, you know, but jobs, stuff like that, whether it be for students or adults. So that's all I have right now. That's my advertisement for the evening.
Okay, thank you. Did everyone get this letter from Monica Von Moll? I think, I was told she sent them out to everybody.
I will.
I haven't received anything from her.
Oh, really?
We'll discuss that at the next section.
Okay, okay, we'll do that then. Thank you. Otherwise, that's all I have. We can temp, do a, just take a break, not an adjournment. So we, we'll come back into a closed session after a short break. So thank you for...
We're going to put the video stuff away.
Hmm? Yeah, he's got to put all the video stuff away, so, okay. We're signing off. Hugo.